I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for December 12th, 2017. Can we all please join us for the pledge?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President De Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Jaworska?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven, we have a quarter.
At this time, we will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Do you have any public comment?
No.
Seeing none, we will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 14th, 2017 Board Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries and the minutes are approved. Next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $4,472,888.69. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Here, yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. Would the Deputy Village Clerk, please read the ordinances and resolutions on the consent agenda that were discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting?
Mr. President, just for informational purposes.
Number three.
Item number three on the consent agenda has been moved to the Finance.
So we moved item number three to the, under the Finance Committee, to the Finance Committee report, correct?
Yes.
Alright.
Resolution, number one, a resolution approving a workers' compensation insurance with Illinois Public Risk Fund. Number two, a resolution approving a one-year risk management agreement with Arthur J. Gallagher and insurance coverage. We're skipping number three. Number four, a resolution establishing the refuse recycling and yard waste rates with Republic Services for the Village of Benserville from January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. Number five, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract extension with Stewart Spreading for Sledge Hall Calling and land application in a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000. Number six, resolution concerning the determination of the Benserville Village Board that change order number one with R.W. Dunerman Company for the increase of $29,000 is required for the downtown streetscape project, North Half, a revised contract cost of $2,122,866. Number seven, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract extension with First Transit Inc. for the dial bus service in a not-to-exceed amount of $277,815. Number eight, resolution authorizing the 2018 paratransit service provider agreement binding between suburban bus division of the Regional Transportation Authority and the Village of Benserville. Number nine, resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to L. Warren Oil Company, Inc. for providing fuel tank rental and fleet fueling services in a not-to-exceed amount of $125,500. Number 10, resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with Network Fleet, Inc. for the GPS tracking services in a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000. Number 11, ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a currency exchange for the applicant Conexion Latina BV Corp. located at 229 West Grand Avenue, Suite E. Number 12, an ordinance adopting the EEO sexual harassment policy. Number 13, ordinance amending the Benserville Village Code to regulate the location and licensing small cell antenna or tower facilities in the right-of-way. Number 14, resolution authorizing agreement with Res Publica Group of the Village of Benserville for professional services.
Is there a motion to approve the 13 resolutions and ordinances as listed on the consent agenda and read by the Deputy Clerk?
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and items on the consent agenda are approved. Moving on to reports of Village Departments under administration, it's an ordinance of the Village of Benserville, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois, approving an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Benserville Park District and the Village of Benserville for the use and operation of the Green Teen Center Zone from January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could jump into this one. This is an IGA between the Village as well as the Benserville Park District for the Green Teen Zone. The Green Teen Zone is located on Green Street, no surprise, I believe 302 Green. Since I started, the Board, you know, has advised me that they'd like to see some change over there. As you guys know, the change I like to see is increased services and reduced cost. Took me a little bit of time to find the right fit, and I think we found that fit in the Benserville Park District. So Joe Velez is here. Joe, can I have you go to the podium and just talk about some of what you guys will be providing at the Green Teen Zone?
Sure.
The podium's right in the back.
Good evening. So, to answer the question, what we would do differently, so first of all, we're gonna go in and analyze just what's being offered now. We have been meeting on a monthly basis with the school districts, the library district, as well as Evan, just to talk about what we can do in conjunction together to not duplicate services between the taxing bodies and give the residents a bigger bang for their buck when it comes to providing services. So in conjunction with the other partners, we're gonna come up with an agenda, but probably the biggest thing we're gonna do is put together a teen advisory council, because unfortunately, a lot of times when adults are talking about what they're gonna do for teens, you look around the table and you don't see any teens. So one of the things we wanna do is empower a teen group in the Village to talk to us about what they wanna see, some of their problems, some of the solutions, have them be part of those solutions, as well as possibly take on some leadership roles in the Park District and in, you know, the city government, things along those lines. So we wanna enhance what's going on there now, and I know there's some great things that are going on there now, but we certainly wanna empower them to have a stake in what they're doing, and with some improvements that we're gonna make there, bring in some digital media, some mixed media, things that teens like to do, we really want to formulate a plan that will be progressive and going by the trends of what's in recreation and, you know, in the teen community, and evaluate and adjust on an annual basis.
One of my mantras with the staff as well as with the Board is do what you're good at. The Village is very good at arresting bad guys, plowing streets, delivering clean water, those type of things. Running the teen zone isn't necessarily what my background's strong in, it's definitely what Joe's background is strong. We've had history working together on successful projects similar to this. So just the terms of it, this'll be a six-year agreement as it currently stands, $60,000 a year with a 3% annual escalator. Currently, we're paying $90,000 a year. The Village will continue to own the building. We're still responsible for the mechanicals, that'd be the roof, the heater, the HVAC system, water system, that type of stuff. Normal wear and tear will fall on the Park District to maintain. And other than that, I think this is a good project and shows some partnerships between the Park District and the Village, and we look forward to it. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Can I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is approved. Number two is an ordinance of the Village of Benserville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois, designating authority to accept electricity pricing and to contract for electricity for the Village's electric aggregation program. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to invite Sharon Durling from NYMAC to the podium to talk about the Village's past involvement with aggregation as well as the exciting news that we got today.
It was surprising, well, as you know, voters approve by a majority vote, referendum allowing you to go out to bid for electric aggregation for them. Your first program, I think, was three years, second was two years, so it expires in March. Need to accept bids 60 to 90 days before to implement the program. We received bids today, but I think you have this chart that Evan presented, just to give you an indication, your savings has been real strong. The average participating ratepayer has $420 in their pocket today for essentially the same electricity, because you went out to bid and negotiate better rates than they could achieve through ComEd. So it's just a hair under $2 million cumulative for the Village. Recently, margins have narrowed, a number of communities have not been able to get bids that improve over the ComEd rate, so they've, you know, rejected. Some have been able to come back. We rebid every year, we monitor the markets, but Bensonville today received bids from, as you'll see, five competitive suppliers, and for the first time in about three years, one of the suppliers offered a rate guarantee versus the ComEd. We haven't seen that in a long time, that's why Evan said, you know, good news. Not only that, I've never seen this before. Years ago, we had matches versus the ComEd rate, but they're offering a match to the ComEd rate less a tenth of a penny, so even a hair better should the ComEd rate drop. Now, to be fair, that ComEd rate today is 7.15 cents per kilowatt hour. There's a monthly fluctuation, they won't match that monthly fluctuation, that's called the purchased electricity adjustment. The ICC trues up, you know, they buy power in big blocks, you have to true it up, so that number varies. However, the average over time nets out to zero, and the ICC says on their website for planning purposes, use net zero for that. So, any questions on this? Maybe Evan wants to elaborate more on...
Yeah, I think that's just a big takeaway. There's no downside to this, this is only upside for our residents, this is more money in our residents' pockets. It being the holidays, I know that every dollar counts, so anytime we can do this and keep money in our residents' pockets and not in ComEds, I'm happy to do so. So with that, if there's any questions, we'll be happy to entertain them.
Any questions from the Board? Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is approved. Moving on to Community and Economic Development Committee, it's an ordinance approving a rezoning variance plot of consolidation and site plan for the applicant Arco Murray located at 220 North York. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Normally, when we discuss things in committee, it goes on the consent agenda with unanimous approval. While it's received a unanimous approval, I think it's important that anytime the Village is selling off land, that we have a full conversation with it and let the residents know, in this case, what a great project we have coming down the line. So with that, I'll have Scott re-describe the project to the audience, and we'll talk about the implications.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. This property is just under 10 acres in size, it's an assemblage of about 27 different parcels. As the manager said, four of them are owned by the people of the Village of Bensonville. The developer, DRG, with their development team, Echo Murray here, they've proposed to assemble all of those parcels, rezon them from C4 retail commercial to I2 light industrial in conformance with our comprehensive economic development strategy. The assemblage of the property and the vacation of the two rights-of-way for Brookwood and Pleasant Streets would allow the construction of 188,000 square foot state-of-the-art industrial facility. You have the floor, excuse me, the site plan in your packet, the staff is excited about this proposal, staff recommends wholehearted approval, and the CDC had recommended approval unanimously at their meet-public hearing on the 5th of this month.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on that, it's, when the Tiff District, Tiff 12 was set up, you set them up for economic development purposes. I can think of no area of town that deserves economic development more than the Brookwood area. There's a lot of vacant land over there, there are some homes, there are some businesses. The developer was able to successfully negotiate with all of those property owners to find them new locations or enough consideration to find a new location on their own. So this will probably be one of the largest developments that we'll tackle in 2018, it's something that we should all pat ourselves on the back for, because it was a long trail to get here, but we're here, this is kind of the...
Electronic messaging center with associated site variable...
Questions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is approved. Resolution authorizing the sale of surplus property on Brookwood and Pleasant Streets and adjacent rights-of-way. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Do I have a second? There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this dovetails into the last item. This is the actual sale of the Village-owned property. Several years ago, the Village started acquiring property on their own over along Brookwood to begin the assemblage process. That turned out to be a very wise decision, it was able to effectuate this process, this development going forward, as well as a wise investment. We are selling the property for about twice of what we bought it a few years ago. This is all backed up and being actually sold above appraised value, which is good to just kinda double-check our math, make sure that this is still a good deal for the residents. So the purchase-sale agreement was reviewed and approved by Council Montana, and do you have anything you wanna add, Joe?
Just that, if you recall at the last meeting, we approved the appraisals, and then the appraisals were made available in the Village Clerk's office, and they've been on the website, and we also published legal notice of the prior resolution advising people that those appraisals were available for inspection, and the appraisals came out at $1,135 for the property, and the purchase price on the property under the purchase-sale agreement is $1,654,971. So significantly more money than what the certified appraiser came at, looked at the property very recently, and what the Village published.
The only other unusual thing here is we're also vacating and selling the right-of-way. This isn't traditional property, this is the actual roadway itself, Brookwood and Pleasant. All of Pleasant will be going away, as well as most of Brookwood, if I recall correctly, as well as some of Addison, which is the name of the right-of-way in the rear.
Yes. And there will be another process to vacate those properties as well that will be coming forward.
Correct.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Moving on to Finance, consideration of an ordinance amending Section 8-7-7 of the Chapter 7 of the Village of Benserville Code establishing the water sewer rates effective January 1st, 2018 and onward. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Thacker?
Sure, thank you, Evan. We did a rate study in 2014, and per that rate study, we were supposed to raise our water and sewer rates by 7.5% each year, but the rate study also said that the Village should perform an analysis of finances for the water and sewer fund and come up with a suggestion for the rates. So we did that analysis every year along with our budget, and for this year, we are proposing few changes to our rate structure, as well as the rates that we have in place as of today. First of all, when we did the rate study in 2014, our total consumption was 540 million gallon, but since the water conservation efforts are in place everywhere, and because of that, our consumption has gone down to 488 million gallon now. So that's like 3% drop in the consumption over, every year, so we have lost almost 9-plus percent of total consumption, and because of that, our total cost is fixed, the total cost of operation is $11.2 million. Out of that, 24% is the variable cost that we have to buy the water with, and remaining 76% includes the debt service and other fixed costs that we have. So because of that, we have to raise the rate, but if we would have maintained the consumption, we might have a different rate increase, but since we are losing this consumption day by day, we have a different rate structure in place as of today. Now, our rates are also divided into four categories, first is the fixed debt service charge, then the water charge, then the sewer charge, then the capital recovery charge. So we did a study of surrounding towns and how they are doing the rate structure, and we came to the conclusion that normally they just have three charges, fixed charge, water charge, and sewer charge. So we are also changing our rates in that same pattern, so down the road, we will not have capital recovery charge, it will be included in the water and sewer charge itself. So we will have just three charges, debt, fixed charge, water charge, and the sewer charge. And, but we did our analysis and we came to the conclusion that we really do not need full 7.5% rate increase, so we are not doing 7.5% rate increase. Instead, we are revising our rate structure. The average residential consumption in town is 5,000 gallon, and 5,000 gallon consumption as of today cost our resident $99.52. And we are raising that $99.52 to $102.45, that's 2.93% rate increase overall for an average resident, but we have a different rate structure where first 10,000 gallon does cost less, and when someone uses more than 10,000 gallon, the cost goes up. So as of today, first 10,000 gallon does cost $9.68. Now, with the new rate in place, the first 10,000 gallon will cost $10, so that's a 32 cent per thousand gallon rate increase. And anyone who uses more than 10,000 gallon, the rate in place as of today is $10.71, that will go up to $12. Now, we have a fixed charge of $8.67, we are raising that to $10, and so on, so we are trying to round up some of our charges, and because of that, overall rate increases 2.94%, and it's across the board. We have a senior discount as of today, $1.54. We are keeping that in place, and that discount will be there for seniors as well, and I wish that we have more water to sell so that we can support a lower rate, but since we are losing this consumption, we are asking Board to approve this new rate structure that we have in place.
This is never easy to raise rates on anything, but it is important to keep rates appropriate so we're not debt financing anything, and we're also making sure that we're delivering clean water, clean, safe water, and this is how we have to fund that. One of the takeaways from this is, the Board, I know when residents interact with us, we get complaints about our, how confusing the water bill is. This does simplify that, it makes it more comparable to other communities, so at least when they're talking to their friends in other communities, it's more of an apples-to-apples comparison.
Well, another thing too is, the surrounding towns were lower than all of them rate-wise, correct?
Right.
Because when I go around town, they say our water, we pay the highest, which is really not true.
I have a few rates to share with you, sir. As of today, our rate is $99.52 for an average resident, which will go up to $102.45. As of today, Itasca's current bill for 5,000 gallon is $125.92, and next year, it will be $135, so which is like almost 34% more than ours. Elmurst as of today is $106.23, which is like 5% more than what we have as of today, and I'm not sure what will be their rate next year, I'm pretty sure they are going to go...
Well, it's $106 now, and that's just a little bit more than what we're gonna pay with our rate increase, plus they're gonna probably increase their rate as well.
With the increase, our rate will be...
We're still under them.
Yeah, we'll still be under. And Wooddale is just along the line, they are $98.87, but they are going to raise their rate next year as well, so they will be around us too. So I think we are watching this number closely, we still have a water loss number to tackle on, and we are hoping to reduce that water loss gap that we have as of today. And this, with this rate increase, we'll be breaking even with our requirement, we are not making any profit with this budget, this will be enough to pay for our expenses and the debt service and everything that we have as of today.
Well, I mean, I know we've been very, very fiscally responsible, tightening our belts on every aspect, and when he told me he wanted to raise the rates, I almost went through the roof, but I understand it, and I understand that costs raise, and if costs go higher and consumption goes lower, we're stuck in the middle, I mean, we just can't, there's no way around it, plus where we get water from, it's, we get hit multiple times.
We have to, DuPage Water Commission is where we buy our water from, you can't skip a bill on them, you can't shortchange them, they collect every day, so we need to make sure that they're made whole.
And we also have done some restructuring in our org chart in Public Works Department where we have reduced our staffing wherever we can, and we have tried to control those costs whenever we can. If we wouldn't have controlled those costs, the required rate increase would have been around 7%. But, and even our original rate study was asking us to raise the rate by 7.5%, and we are not doing that, so we are reducing the rate increase from 7.5% to 2.94% for the most part. So the whole rate structure is attached as an ordinance for this agent item, and...
I know everybody's not gonna be happy about the rate increase, but, I mean, we are still below our surrounding towns, and it's not like we're raising the rates and blowing it on gold streets or things of that nature, we are, we're watching everything else we do to try to keep everything in line for everybody, so Ahmed is the numbers guy, if I yell out a number, Ahmed will know what I need, so again, we're gonna reduce wherever we can reduce and toe the line wherever we can toe the line, and that's what the struggle is up here every day, so that's what we fight for, and I appreciate it, thank you very much. Ahmed, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And again, it's something that just has to be done.
Do I have a roll, any more questions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
So we have nothing left on the Finance, Police Department has nothing, Public Works. Resolution urging the Governor to veto Senate Bill 1451. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Senate Bill 1451 is, as we discussed in committee, what is a, what's known as a small cell bill, this is a bill that was heavily pushed by the telecom lobby down in Springfield in its last legislative session, it has not been signed by the Governor. The DuPage Mayor's and Manager's Communities, as well as several other groups of councils of government, are opposing and trying to urge the Governor to sign this bill. It's a little unusual for us to do resolutions telling the Governor what to do, usually I say, let us run our government, you run your government, but this makes some pretty dangerous assumptions, allowing telecom companies to come in and, pretty much by right, get to install this new technology. The Village remains in support of the small cell technology, we believe it's the way of the future, and will deliver faster download speeds to all of our residents, we just want the responsible rollout of it. We passed a ordinance earlier in the evening, in which the Village can control this, however the Governor signs the small cell bill, most of that control will be given to the telecom companies. So this resolution is being signed by most of the members in the DuPage Mayor's and Manager's Conference, will be boxed up into three boxes and sent down to the Governor, the Speaker of the House, and the Senate President.
Is there any discussion? Any more discussion, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. There's no report under Recreation. Moving on to the President's remarks, the first thing I'd like to talk about, which just proves how awesome Bensonville is, tonight, I'd like to present a check to recognize the funds donated to the Bensonville Community Foundation by the community to support the victims of a tragic apartment fire which we had on November 19th. If you don't know about that fire, November 19th, we had an 18-unit apartment building catch on fire, all 18 units were destroyed, and one resident in that apartment building lost his life right before Thanksgiving. I was out there all day, and I watched 27, 26, 27 fire departments, I mean, from all over battled this fire, I watched the Red Cross come out, I watched the residents come out and just drop boxes of clothes off on the street corners. It was, it was, it was a tragedy that the apartment was on fire, but when you turned around and you looked away from the fire and you saw what the residents did for all the residents, it was truly amazing. I know Chief and I were out there pretty much the whole day, so when that happened, I called Evan right away and I said, we need to do something for these families right before the holidays, there were some kids in there, so we did the, we asked the community for money, it was neighbors helping neighbors, I believe we called it, we did a big social media push, and it's truly humbling to see that we all came together to support it. I wanna thank everyone who donated it and supported this, we raised $13,915. It was, it was a phenomenal effort. Thank you out there in Bensonville. So I know Rosa, on behalf of the Community Foundation, I believe, we're gonna, we're gonna take this check.
So Rosa is the Treasurer of the Bensonville Community Foundation, so she will be receiving the check on behalf of them, the Mayor will be presenting it. These funds will be distributed to the residents, the victims of the fire, as soon as tomorrow. $13,915, we're gonna divide it up, and we're gonna hand out all this tomorrow, you said? Yep. Awesome, well, thank you, everybody. Steve, can you flash? That was good, you're good? Thank you.
Okay, now moving on to our Village of Bensonville Holiday Decorating Contest. I have that here somewhere. All right. Joe, would you take it? Here it is. Um, every year, we have a contest at, uh, Halloween and at, uh, Christmas time. This year, we, uh, have two winners. Our, uh, second place winner, I'm sorry, I'm not organized up here. Our second place winner is, uh, eight thirty-five South Addison Road. Who are we, who, who do we have here for eight thirty-five South Addison? Come on up.
We do have all the pictures of the entries posted to our Facebook page. You guys can go out there and check out the competition. It was very stiff this year. There was a lot of back and forth amongst the, uh, committee on who would win. So, uh, if you want the big grand reveal.
I think I was sabotaged because my decorations were windblown every single time I put them up.
Sure, they were.
I think there's something, do some investigating on that. But not to take away, uh, my neighbor close to me, two thirty-two Tioga Avenue is our grand prize first place winner, two thirty-two Tioga.
So we're gonna keep doing these, uh, contests every year. It's, uh, I think it's kind of fostering itself into some friendly competition amongst neighbors. Um, it is hilarious to see how outlandish some people get. And, uh, I think it just shows some community sports, something a little fun we can do around this, around the holidays. So thank you to everyone who participated, all the entries, as well as the winners.
Couple more remarks because I'm gonna take away some steam from, uh, my Village Manager. Uh, big fight last weekend, last week. Fly Quiet.
Yep.
We were very successful.
Yeah, we passed that, uh, fifty-one to eight. So we were trying to go for thirty-two, which was the majority needed to pass it. Uh, we got fifty-one votes, which sends a clear message to the FAA who now has to review it. Uh, this is not a localized issue. This is a, uh, region-wide supportive initiative. Um, this will probably take six to twelve months to, for the FAA to review. They're not the fastest agency, but they are thorough.
And we like them quite a bit.
We like them and we're gonna support them and we'll do whatever we can.
One hundred percent.
Yep, hundred percent.
Might give them a decorating contest winning if they need.
Yeah, sure. We'll do whatever we can to get this through. Um, but, uh, once it is in place, it will rotate the nighttime runways that are used. Um, this is the first of its kind that's ever been done in the nation. I know I was getting calls from, uh, DFW. Uh, they're intrigued on how this is working. We know Charles de Gaulle in Paris, France, has been watching this. The idea is if it, if this runway rotation plan can be done at one of the most complex airports in the world, it can be done anywhere. So we hope to set the precedent standard for this. So I want to thank everyone, all the communities, everyone I called, uh, everyone the mayor called.
The meetings that we had?
The meetings that we had, yeah. We, we hosted mayors and managers and, uh, we pulled all the stops. So, uh, we looked more like a lobbying firm there for a while than we did a Village Hall. But, uh, we got the votes in line and we did what we had to do. So we're gonna keep fighting for the residents and this is a great step forward.
Uh, one more thing that I'm very, absolutely. One more thing that I'm relieved of. While Evan was out, uh, talking to the news media and taking all the credit for the Fly Quiet program, um, I was out on Church Road walking it with Joe and Mahul and the contractor. Church, the Church Road area is now complete now. There are some issues out there. Um, we do know about some, uh, punch lists about the sewers in the street, um, the bike paths. I walked the whole thing. So we pointed out some things that obviously are not gonna get fixed now. It's gonna be done in the spring. But, um, we are aware of a bunch of issues. Um, I was out there with a resident the week before, walking it. I made notes. I brought Joe out, showed him the same, uh, notes that I made. And I think we're in agreeance that some of it, probably all of it needs to be kind of tweaked and changed. And, uh, we're, we're good. All right. So Church Road is open. Uh, it was two days longer. I, I think we were telling everybody November, the end of November, I think we opened December second.
We never said which calendar. Maybe it was the Gregorian calendar.
Yeah. So, but, I mean, as of right now, I mean, it's, it's, it looks good. Um, some minor tweaks we'll get to. And, uh, it'll be, uh, good as new in, uh, the spring. So that's all I have. Is there any Village Manager report?
Yeah, just some light stuff. Um, this, uh, weekend, December seventeenth at one thirty PM, uh, we're doing our Skate with Santa over the Edge. We always try to make, uh, unique experiences that you can't necessarily get everywhere else. Uh, you can go to any mall and sit on Santa's lap. I don't know where else you can go and skate with Santa. So we invite everyone to come out and join us for that. Uh, another holiday housekeeping item, Village Hall will be closed on the twenty-third, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. Um, the one item there is their water bills went out and they said the last day to pay your water bill is December twenty-sixth. We're closed. We're extending that. Uh, we'll accept them to December twenty-eighth without penalty. So if there's any confusion, if you guys hear anything, if you guys have any questions, uh, December twenty-eighth is the new water bill date.
I did forget one thing and I want to thank, uh...
I'm sorry, my report's time.
The board for coming out and wrapping presents.
Oh, that was awesome, yeah.
Um, for, for our, uh, our toy drive. I also want to thank the board for coming out and handing out coats and toys, uh, last weekend. Um, it was very impressive to see everybody out there and, and to help those who need it. So I, I'm sorry, I...
No, absolutely. I, I overlooked that too. And, uh, it was great. We did, uh, over three hundred families got, three hundred kids got toys for Christmas. And they're not, uh, dollar store toys. A lot of these toys are really nice toys that they're gonna be proud of to receive. And also wanted, Stevie, uh...
Yes.
Often overlooked, but, uh, he put his heart into it this year. And it's, and it was his birthday and he was out there on Saturday morning handing out gifts. So thanks, Steve. You jumped into it headfirst. We're really proud of you. And, uh, it was a great this year and we're gonna make improvements next year and keep going. So thank you.
I know, I don't know what the board did that day, but I know Evan and I had to wrap at least four hundred gifts each.
Absolutely, right.
At least, at least.
Had about three trips to buy more tape for everybody else.
Yeah, we needed more tape. So thank everybody for being out there. Um, do we have a Village Attorney's report? Is there any unfinished business to come before the board tonight?
There will be a special meeting December nineteenth, so next Tuesday. Um, so it's not on the website, but it will be posted with adequate time to meet OMA.
Is there any new business to come before the board tonight?
I think that was my new business, sorry.
All right. Well, that's okay. Um, again, I know we're gonna be here next week, but on behalf of the Village of Bensonville, the trustees here, Evan, Joe, the staff, we want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Please be safe, watch the roadways. Even though we have new product out there, we're gonna be twice as nice as last year. But I want to thank everybody for joining us this year. Look for better things from Bensonville next year. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, we don't have executive session, right? Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Do you have a motion?